FOIA that I wanted to submit to them, which we did today. You all have a copy of the results, the response on that FOIA. Of 13 specific questions, I'm not going to sit there and read every one of them because you all have a copy, you can compare them. Under number three, responses Arkansas Department of Health Rules and Regulations, Carroll Boone Water District will perform all water treatment and distribution duties as required by the Arkansas Department of Health Rules and Regulations. Yeah, well, that's fine dandy, except. Number nine, we got a response on number 10. They have ordered and received 150 pound, 50-pound bag of sodium fluoresilicate from a place in Belgium. The place that they are, oops, lost my notes. The place that they have been talking to is Belgium. At one point, they actually made a comment to this company in Belgium, Preon, that they were not interested in dealing with China at this point. Now, that's good in regards to the garbage that China is putting out there and showing that they are at least doing a little bit of due diligence, but it's not quite enough. We got no response on 11 or 12. Number 13 is that we are getting direct, we are getting certification from Preon in regards to the chemicals that have been requested. Oh, and I did want to say, and this is under number 10, I did not include it to be printed out, but I can email it to you. I have the breakdown that you all are looking at of the responses of 1 through 13. On a couple of these, and especially number 10, I have a completely separate expanded response in regards to the question on number 10. And part of that is that all this fluoride stuff is GMO free. They actually, I'm serious, they actually state that their product is GMO free.
Well, it's a mineral, isn't it?
Regardless, it doesn't have the GMO prop.
Well, I guess.
I mean, I was astounded.
What's GMO?
The genetic and engineering stuff that they're doing to food. But it's GMO free, so I guess we're supposed to breathe deep and say, thank God, I don't know. The one thing that I have noticed on these pages that they have included on every single one of them, and it's really bizarre, and I haven't gotten a straight decent answer from it in regards to it yet. The bottom of the page, it will say, or somewhere on the page, it will sit there and say, if you have received this email by accident, you are to delete it immediately, remove everything related to it from your computer, you are not to forward it on, you are not to reply to it, you have got to get rid of it and can have nothing to do with it.
That's pretty standard industry.
Oh, no, this is, I've seen standard. This is extreme.
Okay, back to the fluoride part of it.
Well, that's on every page that they gave us.
Okay, but it doesn't have anything to do with the fluoride.
So, right, anyway. So, we've got that, we've got a really bad response. I mean, they did what they could with what they had, but, okay. You also have a page called considerations, and these are the things that we've been weighing against what's been said, done, or attempted to be said or done. These are all the things that we have taken into consideration in regards to state law, what Carroll Boone is doing, what Eureka wants them to do or not do, the whole nine yards. You can read that on your own because it's lengthy. What it comes down to is what we would like to see. When I say we, I'm talking the vast majority of our citizenry. So far, all these months of going through this, one person has said, let's do fluoride, that's been it. So, what we have here, and you should have a copy of it, is the ordinance that we would like to see passed tonight. Basically, it's telling them to follow all laws, not just some. Make sure you're keeping your people safe. This is what we are doing, this is our ordinance to keep our people safe. We are doing due diligence. Our people have asked us, please, keep us safe. We don't want this, we have voted it down, we have been ignored, we should not be forced into having this in our lives, much less having to pay for it after saying no. The state mandate, it's an unfunded mandate, that itself is a problem. But what we would really like to see, and keeping in mind that Carroll Boone has their quarterly meeting on Thursday, what we would like to do is have this ordinance given a number, read and passed tonight. We can get it to them immediately tomorrow, or I can take it in Thursday, whichever. Get it done, and if nothing else, this will help delay until January when half the town is going to Little Rock, to the legislature. But either way, we are trying to tell them, please, this is what we have said. We don't want it, keep us safe.
Mr. Snyder.
Question for the attorney. Have you read this ordinance?
I saw this for the first time, I believe it was last night, Ms. Snyder sent it to me. I have seen it, yes.
Stupid question, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it anyway. Nobody read anything into it, I'm just asking the question. What jurisdiction does the city of Eureka Springs have over Carroll Boone Water District in relation to this ordinance?
We have a contractual relationship, as I understand it. We do not have control over them, nor do they have control over us. We do have certain allowances to put input to them, but we are contractually obligated to fulfill our parts of buying their treated water in there to supply us with water based on, I believe, a contract that the mayor's office has.
Follow up to that question. In that contract, is there any wording that would allow us, as the city of Eureka Springs, to dictate to the Water District the disclosure of those chemicals or anything that we can contractually deal with?
From my remembrance of looking at the contract in the past, I don't think there's anything that would allow us to dictate to them any of that at this point. Now, that would be a matter of negotiation, should the contract be renewed at some point in the future. But that is not, at this point, a contract is a contract once it is signed unless both parties agree to modify.
And in our, I thought, follow up there, in our contract, is there a cut-and-run clause for the city to renegotiate during the term of that contract? Any of the terms? Or do we just have to wait until the contract has reached its expiration date when we renegotiate?
It would be my understanding that to try to dictate a change in contract that was opposed by Carroll Boone, would result in them probably declaring breach of contract and not allowing us to make a change at this time. If both parties needed to make a change and both parties were willing to come to the table, I think, yes, there's language that would allow both parties to modify the contract. But with it being a unilateral step on our part, we would probably be declared a breach, and then at that point, it would be up to a court to decide if we were damaging them in some manner.
Last part now about damage.
Good.
So, in your city attorney opinion, sitting at this table, advising counsel, sitting at this table, in regard to this draft ordinance, what is your learned opinion?
The draft ordinance in and of itself, I don't think, and I'd spoken with Ms. Snyder for a moment just before counsel, when she asked me what my opinion was, I think the draft ordinance itself probably would not get any effect necessarily from Carroll Boone. If they do believe it is breached, it would be justification potentially, of all the most dire possibilities, that they turn the tap on us.
And what's the possibility?
I don't know. Now, at this point, do I think that there's a majority of the people in this town, I don't know whether Ms. Snyder speaks for a majority or not, there are an awful lot of people that don't want fluoridation. I don't know that this is the step to take. Having looked at it, what I did since last night, I have some severe reservations about certain parts of the ordinance. In particular, there's, it seeks monetary damages against potentially Carroll Boone if they don't follow things. I think those are clearly, a court would throw those out as not justified or legal. There are other parts of it that I think dictate things that we cannot force. So, I do not think that this ordinance necessarily, as written, would have any pertinent effect to try to stop fluoridation at this point.
One last thing. While I understand that we've had a lot of passion, and passion that I'm not even necessarily disagreeing with about the issue of fluoridation, I have a concern at this time about this ordinance and the approach that would be taken by passing it, and what the problems it would create for the city, that concerns me, even though I understand the issue of fluoridation.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay. When was the last time you read the contract?
It's been at least a couple of years since I've seen.
I just wanted to make sure that you verified that, because I have been reading it. The contract is in regards to potable water, has nothing to do with anything else, so I honestly don't think, after I thought about it, I honestly don't think that the ordinance would be in violation of the contract because the contract is for potable water, it is not for other products. The FOIA, they have to be able to give answers, all those questions that we sent in. If they have the stuff, they have to reply. That's all public information, and it states it everywhere that they have to comply to an FO. So, you know, asking about them giving us certification and stuff, yeah, they have to. If you gave them a form, they would have to. Okay? So, yes, they do have to, do have to do it in that regard. The things as Eureka Springs for three times now has voted against fluoride, that in itself right there tells you the majority of people do not want fluoride. I guess it has been one person who has spoken up in all this time, that's been it. There's probably others out there, they just haven't said it, doesn't matter, we voted it down three times, we're being forced to do it, but we're not going after fluoride on this ordinance, we are going after everything else, and especially following the law. And the law keeps talking about potable water, we are not talking about potable water. When you read this, you'll see there's a whole lot of stuff in there, in the consideration stuff, it'll show an awful lot, where it's not the potable water that we're talking about, it's the rest of it. Carroll Boone cannot and will not attack the city for writing our own ordinance to protect our people. They will not turn off the faucet, so to speak, because it will really hit the fan if they ever would, and they know it. They aren't going to attack us, the state isn't going to attack us, the state isn't going to attack them, because no matter who would do what, it will end up in a court case, and the state and Delta Dental do not want this to go to court, because it will then come out, as good as, it will then come out exactly, everything that has gone into this, when you have the whole world saying no, there's a reason for it, okay? So far, in various places, in all around the country, states have threatened to fine on a daily basis, not a single time has this happened yet. And it would probably be a whole lot cheaper than a lawsuit if they break our laws. But, point being, we want to delay until January if nothing else, and if they have to go through this with their legal group and think about it and weigh the pros and chons, pros and cons, and check into stuff, so be it.
Mr. McLean, did you have your hand up for?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, go ahead, you first.
Now, I understand your passion about it, I don't want it either, I really don't.
Oh, it's okay, there it is.
But the ordinance, I mean, all we can do with an ordinance is for the benefit of the city. If this ordinance is, I mean, what we have with them is a contract for services, it's nothing to do with this ordinance. I suppose if, for an ordinance, for down the road with somebody else, maybe before you were contractually united, it might be possible, but just like it is for the towers and things like that when they come in. But, I mean, there's something here that we have no control over. And so, yes, and potable, I mean, then your debate is what is potable.
Uh huh. That would be part of it, yeah.
Well, that's your big part of it, you just said that's it.
No, I'm saying that's what our contract has, is potable water.
Okay, so, but you're debating what is potable and what is not, so, I mean, that's...
No, we're debating law.
All right, well, the law is your contractually bound. Now, we can, we can, you know, try to break that contract, and like Tim says, let them turn the tap off and provide our own, go back to the wells. But you're not going to, if Berryville, if, and whoever else is on Carroll Boone, if it's not a united front, totally, you have nothing, because the same water that they get, we get, there's no...
Well, see, that's where, when the state mandate happened, in the past, we have voted it down, nobody has gotten it from Carroll Boone, okay? You can actually, the towns that want fluoride can actually have it added to their water supply at their starting point. So, if Harrison wants it, or the water enters Harrison, that's where it gets done. It's that way, we wouldn't get it, they could have it all they wanted, but we would be forced to have it.
I would venture to say they're in the same boot, you know, same boat that we are.
Mr. DeBina.
Well, that's insane.
I disagree with that assessment. The state has mandated that any water supply that serves over 5,000 people be fluoridated, and the system supplies over 5,000 people, so it will be fluoride. We've managed, over all these years, to stave off the fluoridation for the other three cities and the other county in this system by our refusal to do that. The state has superseded our authority and mandated to the Carroll Boone Water District that they fluoridate their water. At this point in time, we've debated this issue many times over many meetings, we passed a resolution showing that we do not want this to occur. I ask at this time that a motion be placed on this table so that we have some direction to go with this discussion. We have plowed this field many times. I would like a motion to come forward so that we know what we're doing here tonight.
Okay, Ms. Ellers, give everybody a fair chance here.
Okay, what does Carroll Boone feel about this? What is their position about fluoridation?
They're on our side, but can't say that.
Okay, but they are...
I'm serious, they can't say that.
Okay, but they're, now, your strategy is to delay any fluoridation until the 1st of January, until the legislature meets, is that what you're saying?
The strategy is to hopefully end it, but we will delay if that's what it takes in order to have time to end it.
Okay, well, then we have a chance with the state legislature to have this law rescinded.
Yes, and that's the whole goal.
Okay, so, is Carroll Boone willing clandestinely, if necessary, to go along with anything that we do to delay this?
As long as it's legal.
Okay.
I mean, that's what they're having to do right now, their hands are tied.
Okay, if we pass, and I'm just thinking about around this, because clearly, the people of Eureka Springs do not want fluoride in their water, neither do I. So, strategically, if we pass some sort of a resolution, yeah, resolution, a resolution, or whatever it takes, an ordinance, a resolution, or whatever, I mean, kind of hanging with me here, Tim, because I'm not quite speaking the language, to compel Carroll Boone to not fluoridate our water, which means that then the water down the line is not going to be fluoridated unless they supply the material to Berryville so they can do it themselves.
Point of entry is where fluoridation is added.
Okay, so, does Carroll Boone have the substance that they were going to put in the water now?
They have their sample bag.
And do they have the capabilities of doing the tests according to the law?
It has been sent to Chicago, I believe, to run the sample.
Okay, so, what I'm thinking is, if we pass, would this work? I'm just trying to think of a way around this. If we pass some sort of an ordinance forbidding them to put fluoride in our water, and somehow or other suggests that the cities down the line have to get the stuff from Carroll Boone and put it in their water themselves, and then they have to sue us for interfering with their fluoridation if they really passionately want this stuff in their water, this would take us through January, wouldn't it? This would delay this longer.
Point of order.
It doesn't work like they have...
Hold on, I have to address the point of order. Go ahead.
I have, I'll make the motion that we, no, I won't make that motion.
Just let her finish her question, and we'll do it afterwards.
We've been down this road, we've been down this road before. They are not going to build three more fluoridation plants. Matter of fact, they're already building the fluoridation plant as we speak for the four-city, two-county district. This whole process started in 2011, and here we are at the end of 2014. This should have started four years ago.
We've been working on it all this time.
This effort to pass these ordinances, which will have no binding over the Carroll Boone District, I'm sorry, but this is a futile effort. If individual citizens want to sue the Carroll Boone Water District, all for it. But as a city, I cannot risk the dollars that come through a lawsuit for a suit that will have no standing in the state. The state has mandated this, Carroll Boone District is bound by the state mandate to provide fluoridated water, and that's what they will do, and us as a city has no authority over, they're not even, we have no authority to supersede the state. So, at this time, I'd like, either we vote on this, or we end this discussion right now, because we've discussed everything that's occurred at this table many times before. So, if you want to make a motion to adopt this ordinance, I suggest you do it at this time.
I still don't have the floor, do I?
No, ma'am, he still has his point of order, he just finished it. Okay, regarding his point of order, is there anything else that needs to be addressed with it? Do we need to vote on the point of order, Mr. Rivera, since he did make a motion in that point of order? Can they both be made at the same time? Can he call a point of order and make a motion in that point of order that has to be two separate?
It has to be two separate.
Okay. So, any, do you feel like your point of order's been addressed?
The normal procedure for discussion at council is that we have a motion, we don't even have a motion before us at this point in time. We are taking up a lot of our time on issues that have been discussed many times before.
So, I'll make an ordinance.
Okay, so...
I invite you to come forward with a motion.
All right, let's back up here and just say, okay, I'll still kind of run the show here, a little bit. Your point of order's been addressed, are you satisfied with this?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion separate from the point of order?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Snyder, you have the floor.
Okay. I understand what James is saying thoroughly. We have been fighting this ever since the beginning. It takes time, yes, it does. Whether or not the city would end up being involved in any kind of lawsuit action or anything else is doubtful. The state certainly can't do anything because they passed an unfunded mandate, they can't force us to do something we voted against and expect us to pay for it. It's that simple on that part. So, I will make a motion that we give this ordinance a number and read it to hopefully pass it. And if you want, under Section 5 violations, we can remove section, or Part B of Section 5. Didn't you dot on me, but that part was in there.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yeah, to read, number, read and pass.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's still discussion, Ms. Ellers, do you want the floor now?
I'm talking to you.
Do you want the floor now? You asked if you could have the floor a while ago.
I just want to make a statement, we do not want this to happen in Eureka Springs. I really sincerely believe that this is a poisonous substance, there's too much evidence out there. I really think that it's a violation of our constitutional rights for a state to make a law to force us to ingest a substance that we do not want to put into our bodies, and there are too many people here who cannot afford to buy water to drink and to wash with and all that sort of thing. So, frankly, I think this is a matter for the federal courts, but I am going to follow Mickey's lead here and think that the state does not want to get into a legal battle over this. This legislation was passed clandestinely, as far as I'm concerned, there was a lot of Mickey mousing going on there, excuse the term, and I don't think the state wants it to be examined too closely. So, I think we should just go ahead with this and let the chips fall where they may and see what happens.
Mr. Mitchell.
I agree with the issue of fluoridation, and I agree with the citizens' concern, and I don't want to see fluoridation either. But at the same time, I have a serious concern about the obligations of the city to its citizens for the health, safety and welfare, and I think fluoridation is one of those. I think we're a little bit late to the party here with our actions, but besides that, I'm concerned about the issue with Carroll Boone and the contractual relationship and the potential of this ordinance. And I'm also concerned that the best way to have approached this would be at the legislative level instead of the city level, and that we should proceed very carefully. So, I'm going to honestly say that I'm not in favor of this ordinance, I appreciate Mickey's work on it and the passion, and the passion of everybody that has been here, but I am not willing to jeopardize our contractual relationship with our water supplier at this time.
Okay, Mr. McLean.
Just to say that, you know, I agree with that as well, and you can write 100 ordinances against fluoridation, and they're worthless, they're going to do what they have to do, it's a state mandate, we have no control over that, state law supersedes anything that we write.
Would you be willing to sue the state?
City's not willing to, no.
Well, no, you.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, just one final comment. We at this table are here to represent the people. The people have said over and over and over in many, many ways, we do not want fluoridation. We want you, the city, to protect us, we want you, the city, to take whatever steps necessary to protect us. This is their money, if we have to get into a lawsuit, it's their money, they're willing to spend it to keep their bodies safe. I personally would much rather nail the state for the stupidity that they have done. I honestly do personally feel that we could beat them, and I think we could beat them hands down, and I think we'd have the whole town with us in the courtroom helping. That being said, we represent the people, the people say no, we've got to take a stand. If they're willing to risk the city's coffers, what have you, then it's our responsibility to back them and represent them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, the clerk, please reread the motion.
To give the ordinance a number and read it for passage.
To give the ordinance a number and read it for passage.
Any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Let's roll call it, just to be sure.
Oh, I got it.
We should probably need a roll call.
Well, okay.
End of.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Reluctantly, no.
Two, three.
Okay, that moves us on to new business, the discussion of the parks. All right, let me make sure I got this right. For the record, Number 1 and Number 2 combined, Number 1 is discussion with parks regarding the circus, and Number 2 is review by the city attorney regarding options other than discussion with parks regarding the circus.
Motion to discuss.
Wait, wait, wait.
Motion 2.
Can I make a motion for five minutes break before we go into another discussion? Thank you.
We'll have to vote on it. Okay, motion been made. Is there a second?
Five minutes break, guys, come on.
A second?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're taking a break, five minutes. We'll be back in session. The next item on the agenda was new business, combine Number 1 and 2 into Number 1. Again, for the tape, Deal Number 1, Discussion with Parks Regarding the Circus, and Number 2 is Review by the City Attorney Regarding Options Other Than Discussion with Parks Regarding the Circus. I'm going to ask that any discussion in any all demeanor in this room and out in the hall be civil. If it becomes anything other than that, then I'll have to deal with it, okay? So everybody play nice. All right. With that, I need a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
Question for the city attorney. We have before us a proposed ordinance of amending Title 6, Chapter, Eureka Springs National Code. Have you reviewed this ordinance?
I saw it a couple of days, or a day or so ago, and have read it. Yes, so I, yes, I've seen it.
And in your opinion, does it fulfill all of the requirements to prohibit any future circuses in the city of Eureka Springs?
I think that it probably might discourage circuses from coming to town. I don't necessarily think it would withstand a legal challenge to its face if it was challenged in court. Based on the stated goals, to protect people from wild animals running amok, or to protect animals from being abused, it has certain problems that I believe would be, lead a court to possibly strike it down based on equal protection. Because it allows for the same type of animals to be brought in on a temporary basis if they're from a local facility, or, and thereby, the same hazards could be there because we are not in charge of those local facilities that are outside the city. We're not inspecting them to see whether they, and I'm not in any way intimating that I think any animals are being abused in Carroll County, but we have no other, we have no control to see that they're not. And we have no ability to say that a tiger brought in by a particular circus as opposed to a tiger brought in by someone else might not eat the same small child within our town.
A follow-up question to that.
Ms. Snyder, I'll give you a second.
So in your opinion, we could craft an ordinance that would prohibit traveling circuses from showing in the city of Eureka Springs?
I think crafting an ordinance would probably be enough to discourage most of them because the market is so small here that they would not want to come in here and challenge an ordinance necessarily in a court in order to perform.
So we have, in your opinion, then, we have that authority to craft such an ordinance?
I don't know that you could craft one that would withstand such a challenge, but I believe it would probably not result in a challenge.
So for the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion that we ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance prohibiting any future traveling circuses or animal shows within the city limits of Eureka Springs.
I'll second that.
Okay, and away we go.
Discussion. Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
I'd like to also, if possible, that the attorney give consideration to Mrs. Bricks and some of the inputs she's got in this process at your leisure, so that that could be accomplished. I understand that a lot of this ordinance that we had before, all these whereas's were taken off and then locked towards the end, so it shouldn't be a cumbersome addition or amendment to the ordinances there to meet the objective that you gave us.
Ms. Snyder.
Well, that was my first question. The whereas's that are drawn through, Rachel, are those removed? Yeah, please.
The words whereas, I thought, were a little.
Oh, so the paragraphs are not.
The paragraphs are still there. I would just like to point out, and I'm not trying to challenge Mr. Weaver at all, but there are 45 cities that have similar ordinances, and this exact ordinance was just passed in May by another town. Not that our town doesn't maybe have, like, dissimilar things, but these types of ordinances are able to be passed, aren't they?
I'm not saying that it can't be passed. I'm saying that if it was to be challenged in a court of law, I don't know that it would necessarily stand up to the challenge. I don't think it necessarily would in the form that it's here. I don't know that their market share in this small of a town is worth anyone ever challenging it.
But you can work with me as directed by, or asked by, Mr. Mitchell.
So the words are gone, this is there.
You're not, you're not going to find a huge circus wanting to perform necessarily in Eureka Springs anyway that's going to spend lots of money to challenge our ordinance if we have to win.
Okay, yeah, I'm done. Okay, so now that I understand that all of this is in there, you know, I'm, I hate the idea of caged animals always have. I also feel, though, that we need to make it a little bit more encompassing in a much easier way. And if we would pass an ordinance in regards to an event, a permitted event, meaning if there's going to be an animal event, whether it's a circus, a rodeo, whatever.
Dog show.
Pardon?
Dog show.
The kind where animals are caged and brought.
Dog show.
A dog show is out.
They have to bring them in carriers.
Oh, see, I'm thinking dog show, like you take your dog in and he struts his stuff.
I mean, if you're going to be, if you're going to be letter specific, you're going to have to get really specific.
Well, right now, I'm just giving you the general idea of what I'm trying to say, okay? If we make it a permitted, a permitted animal event, meaning if, let's say, the circus wants to come, then our law enforcement probably division would check into their background to see if they have violations, problems, whatever. But it would cover more than just a circus, because more than just a circus has animals. Did I make myself at all clear?
No. Mr. McLean.
When was the last time we had the circus here?
I've been here 41, ever, ever.
Yeah, I remember ones, out there where the, where the, where the rest of them is now, the last time I remember one. So, you know, we can pass the ordinance, and we'll probably not see another one for 30 years.
Or we could get the county court to ask it for the county.
Mr. Mitchell.
We had a motion, we got a second, and we asked the attorney to collude with the expert that has voiced very eloquently the issue about the circus and the animals, and has been supported quite eloquently by a fair number of the citizens. And I have faith that he will present something to us that is acceptable.
Ms. Snyder.
Is it possible to merely say, "We will not allow traveling animal shows in Eureka Springs"? Can we say something that easy?
Well, I think you can say something that easy.
And have it be effective.
But you, you still, I mean, you still, I'm not telling you that anything you write is going to necessarily stand up in a court of law.
But nobody's going to do it, but.
Now, I'm going to try my best to craft something, if I present you with something, if that's what the vote is that I'm supposed to do, that will stand up to the best of our ability.
But would something that simple work?
I would think that it would be better to have something a little more thorough than that if we were going to actually end up in a court of law.
What's unclear about a traveling animal show?
Ms. Eller, go ahead.
A traveling animal show is a magician showing up in town with a rabbit in a cage.
Oh, that's true.
I mean, you have to, really, when you're writing an ordinance, you have to be careful what you say. Now, I do think if we do this ordinance, it's got to have a definition of what is an exotic or a wild animal. We have to define that, and I think we need to leave in, in an exhibition at a non, the restrictions should not apply, an exhibition at a non-mobile permanent institution or facility, because it's quite possible, I mean, remember the whole debate we got into about the monkey up at the Gaviola Chapel? There has to be, I mean, I can see where somebody might want to book into the auditorium that has some performing dogs, or some performing, I don't know, whatever.
Jojo.
And we don't want an ordinance against that. I mean, in other words, what I'm saying is that you just can't legislate things out of existence. The point of this is that we do not want large shows and circuses that cage wild animals and have them doing things that they're not designed to do. I mean, that's not putting it well, but, so let's not get carried away and try to make this ordinance so restrictive that we get into these dumb arguments like we did over the rabbit at the Gaviola Chapel.
Monkey.
Now the monkey's on our back.
There you go.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion on it? Yes, ma'am?
Is the circus guy still here? I don't see him.
Yeah, he's out here waiting his turn.
Can we ask him in?
Everybody's nice to him.
Who's going to have a circus and is going to be gone?
There you go, sir. Yes, sir, please reintroduce yourself.
I'm Jerry Milligan, Carson and Barnes Circus.
So my question to you is, in all the years that Carson has been going on, how many times have you run into this kind of situation?
We run into this kind of situation rather often, actually. We have an organization out there that is attempting to shut down circus. And the best way that they can come to do that is by attacking the animals, attacking us for the way we treat the animals. Now, I just was listening to your discussion here, and I heard about the dog show, that's caged animal, the cows, bulls, horses, whatever, at the county fair, those are caged animals. I don't know about wild animals. Now, where that comes in, but, excuse me, we have no animal that have been trapped in the wild and brought in. And I hear about how our elephants are injured and how they're abused and all those kinds of things. In my, let me count them right quick, 12 and 14, in my years, let me just say it that way, with the circus, I have never seen an injured animal on the show. I have seen the vet there. I do know that the Asian elephant is on the endangered species list. I do know that we have a breeding compound in Hugo, Oklahoma. I do know that we're doing our best to protect the species and to protect the animals that we have. As far as doing unnatural acts, there are baseball players and football players all over the U.S. that are doing unnatural acts. And I don't know, I've got to get a bias in here, if any of you are hunters, are fishermen, are pet owners, I suggest you be careful about opening this door, because we're going after circuses and elephants right now. But at a dog show in previous years, antifreeze wound up at the cages, which is highly toxic to dogs, and they like it, with notes that said, "Better dead than caged." This is the kind of organization you're dealing with, folks, and, but I'm afraid I'm buried. You gave me three minutes a while ago.
No, that was before.
Tried to stick with it. So, any other questions directly?
So this is not new for you?
Not new.
You've been doing.
It's kind of new for me, because I happened to be available. I got a call at 10 o'clock this morning that said, "Can you be in Eureka Springs tonight?" And I said, "Yes," because I live in Springfield, Missouri. And the show is in Tennessee right now. And just as a note, we meet whatever regulations, whatever laws are present, okay? And in Tennessee, we have to, by law, chain our elephants. In Arkansas, I think, now, don't hold me to this, I'm not a legal guy at all, but I think they will not be chained in Arkansas, and, because the law does not require it here.
Okay, so when y'all are traveling, when the circus is traveling, okay, and they're in Tennessee, and in a few weeks, they'll be in Eureka. When, how, and where do the animals get R and R?
R and R? Okay. Basically, or probably most of it, in the arena, in the tent. But let me just give you a scenario, okay? We try to travel, our ideal move is like 40 to 50 miles. Now, sometimes we have to go farther than that, but we don't like to for several reasons, one of which is the elephants, because they have to get in a truck, and they ride down to the next town. When they get there, they're taken out, and they are put into a pen or chained or whatever. Sometimes they do some pulling, elephants are pulling animals, and sometimes they do some pulling around the show. In years past, they actually helped set up the tent, and that was, that was good for them. We wish they could now, but the tent has changed, and it's not practical to use them anymore. At, I think it's 10 o'clock now, or 1 o'clock, I've forgotten which, they go out and they get a bath. They're bathed daily. And then they do, and they do elephant rides, and that gets them some exercise doing that. And they, at night, depending on the weather, we have a canopy that's over them, and depending on the weather, and cold is the one that'll get us, but if we can stay out of the cold, they stay outside, and then in the morning, they're loaded into the trucks, and we move our 50 miles, 100 miles, whatever it happens to be that day, and they're taken out, and we do it again the next day. And then occasionally, we draw blood from the cows that are on the show. We don't bring any bulls to town, but we draw blood from the cows, and it's sent for analysis to see when they're coming into season that they will accept the bull. When that happens, we send elephants from Hugo, Oklahoma, which is where the breeding compound is, to the show, and a couple of cows go to Hugo. I found it rather interesting and unique that... I found it rather interesting and unique that they go in a pair, one to see the bull, and the other one to stay with her and take care of her, and they stay together throughout the maternity, which is about twenty-four months. And the second cow is called Aunt or Aunt, A-U-N-T, Elephant, and she, they stay together, and when the baby is born, and this is the way they do it in the wild, so this is the way we do it, when the baby is born, the mother takes care of herself, and the cow, I mean, Aunt, takes care of the baby.
Thank you.
Anything else? I can go on all night. I suspect you folks don't really, don't really want me to.
So they do have R and R and whatever?
Say it again?
They do have R and R.
They do have R and R, yes, ma'am, but they are, they are confined, you know? You don't want elephants wandering around through your gardens in Eureka Springs, I'm sure.
Would they take care of the pig problem and all that?
Just stick with it.
Or the disprive?
Let's stick with the program here.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
Anybody else?
Any other questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them. Let me just say too, while I've got a chance, I have completely changed my image of circus since I joined one. In 1996, when I retired, I'd been to two circuses in my life, and I thought that circus was a bunch of criminal gypsies, that were just kind of wandering through the world and doing all the things, and some of the images that you've been presented with. And my wife and I, my wife is here with me, and my wife and I decided we would go ahead and join, and the day they ask us to do something we weren't comfortable with, we'd just quit. If we're big kids, we can walk off. That was in 1998. We're still here. Talked to the owners since I've been in town, they're friends, they're good people. This show is, was founded by a fellow by the name of D.R. Miller. His daughter, his only daughter, and his only two granddaughters are the owner-operators and their husbands of the show. Now, the daughter will probably not be in Eureka Springs, both of the granddaughters probably will, that's a hands-on, we're here, we watch them, we know what's going on, show. To be honest with you, there's some shows out there that deserve my image of circuses, but this is not one of them. There are other good circuses besides Carson and Barnes also.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll wait if something comes up.
Thank you, sir. All right, more comments? Snyder, make a brief.
I still think we need background check in regards to this stuff, rather than just straight across the board saying no to any and all. I don't understand why we can't do like a background check, see if there's been problems, I don't know, but like I said, if we're going to do circuses, we, I keep thinking rodeos. I'm sorry, I'm not a good old boy or a redneck. Rodeos bother me. Anyway, if you could look into that while you're doing that, that would be nice.
All right, motion been made and seconded. We did a roll call vote, is that correct? We didn't do a roll call on this one yet, okay.
The motion, I have no idea anymore.
All right, if you'll reread the motion, please.
It was much more extensive than I wrote down, but what the gist of it was, Mr. DeVito made a motion to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance that not have circuses here, and Mr. Mitchell seconded.
Okay. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four, one?
No, no, I said aye.
Five, zero.
Five.
Okay.
Five, zero.
Right. Number three's postponed, number four's postponed. Here's this, the number five, discussion of changing CACP, or CAPC limits on residency to include an at-large seat from within Carroll County. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, floor's open? Yes, sir.
Well, for one thing, we don't have anything before us to talk about, so I'll make a motion to have the city attorney to draft an ordinance allowing an at-large seat from within Carroll County to serve on the CAPC.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
I have a question. Based on the 2.56 chapter Advertising and Promotion Commission for the, for the city, there are four members or shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, so I would wonder if the clarification of that motion is one of the four, or, it can't be the two council, but there's also one that's at-large by the mayor. One member shall be a qualified electorate appointed by the mayor for the public at large, who shall reside within the municipality. So I'm trying to figure out, if we already have one at-large within the municipality, is, are we also possibly going to change that one, or the one of the four? Which one are we looking at opening up? Because the ordinance for the state, or the statute for the state, had originally very clearly said that the, that the four members shall be owners or managers of business in the tourism industry, and the owner-manager shall reside in the levying municipality, or if the governing body of municipality, ordinance may reside outside of the municipality but within the county. But obviously, the city statute put a different spin on that, and said they had to be within the municipality. So my question for the attorney now, is if you have state statute that says one thing, and you have an ordinance which kind of follows it, but has a different interpretation of that, which, the ordinance or the statute, which one, which one is?
The statute allows, under my understanding, the statute allows for the city to make that election, and the city, when they passed their enabling ordinance, made their election to limit it to within the city limits. So those four seats potentially, or at least one of them, could be changed by changing the enabling ordinance that created the current commission. And, but the state law does not require that.
Okay. Since we're on an ordinance, and then, could, could an ordinance also have discussed about the membership, and the way they elect the chair, and the length of term of the chair? Can that be dictated by ordinance? I don't see no reason you can't in the statute.
No, I don't think so. No, that's in the original state. Excuse me, I'm out of order.
Well, I haven't found it in the state yet, that's why I'm wondering, asking that question.
Let's do one thing at a time.
Part of the state ordinance was known laughingly as the Eureka part. We had our own, and the state, oh, never mind.
For the sake of the motion, I will pass on that, but I, I think we, we can easily just slam dunk it, and, but again, I would like to clarify, is it the, is it the four members, are you looking at the one that the mayor gets to appoint? Which one do you want to make open? Stop there.
Ms. Zeller.
We don't, at this point, have an at-large member, do we, on the CAPC? Who's the at-large member?
Charles Raggedell.
Who?
Charles Raggedell. He's chairman.
Okay, and he, he lives in the city, but he, and he was appointed by the mayor, or by the CAPC?
And just, and just reappointed as.
Okay.
CAPC recommends.
Why don't we make it possible for the at-large member appointed by the mayor to live outside the city limits? Wouldn't that just simplify it?
Any one of those four seats.
I, I think we have talent that lives outside the city limits that we need to access, because we have some trouble getting people volunteering to serve on the CAPC, and we have a lot of people with marketing talent that live outside the city, and I think we should be able to draw on it.
Mr. McCollum, go ahead.
I don't know that it's been brought to Mr. Weaver yet, but there are a couple of people out there that are working on an ordinance to get the draft put together for just this, and, and, actually, I'm, I may be incorrect, but I was, under the, I had the understanding that it would make any of the seats available, either in town or out of town. It's still, it's not going to change the process of once they're, they're done, it's not going to change who's on there now, but any of the seats, other than the two city council ones, would be available to, but it's still, it's still, they're, they're, you know, nominated through the CAPC and voted on their first, and then sent here.
If the effort is to bring a qualified individual that does not live within the city limits, the at-large seat would be the seat. Otherwise, you're going to limit yourself, and you're going to exclude a very qualified person who lives in the county, but doesn't have one of those two businesses, be it motel or restaurant. This could be the best marketing guru on the planet, but if you don't allow it to be the at-large seat, you're restricting your availability of candidates.
So you want to amend your motion?
No, my motion said the at-large seat, didn't it?
Well, should, for an outlaw, at...
Well, there's only one at-large seat.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Can the out, okay, so they're going to be making, making decisions on how to pay, how to spend CAPC money, so should the at-large person be a CAPC tax collector?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to put that in the ordinance?
No, now let's...
What are the requirements for at-large?
Does not have to be a tax collector.
Oh.
One member shall, oh, sorry.
Mr. Mitchell, please go ahead and read that.
Yeah.
And one member shall be a qualified elector appointed by the mayor from the public at large, who shall reside within the municipality and shall serve for a term of four years.
So they don't have to be a business owner, right? I always get...
It doesn't say that.
Tax collector.
It doesn't say they have to be a tax collector or a business owner?
Says qualified elector.
Elector, right.
And that's it.
So they can vote, I guess.
Well, a tax collector would be either an owner of a lodging facility or a restaurant.
Be a manager.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't...
Snyder, you have come.
No, that's what I wanted, was clarification.
All right. Any further on this? Okay, would you please reread the, the...
Mr. DeVito made a motion to have the city attorney draft an ordinance for the at-large position, or an at-large position?
The at-large position, which there's only one.
From Carroll County, and I didn't catch who seconded it.
I didn't.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody clear on the motion?
We'd just be amending the ordinance, wouldn't we?
Correct, yes.
Not draft a new one, right? Just amend this one?
Correct. It would be an amendment to the existing ordinance.
Thank you, I just want to be sure it's not a new ordinance.
Okay. No further, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. All right. That brings us to agenda setting. Anybody up for an agenda setting thingy here? Mr. DeVito?
Done here.
Mr. McCollum?
Mr. Dotson was by to see me and get back on the agenda since, since Mr. Tharp is no longer in business, and would like to pick up on the carriage business. Apparently, he's, he's bought out their website already, and, and locations...
My decision, not surprising.
So you want him on the agenda?
That's what he told me, so yeah, I just put it, he'll, he'll need to be here and present us.
I'll second that.
Anybody, anything else, Mr. McCollum?
Yeah, the, the hospital.
Oh.
I guess to put it back on to see where we are, because of the letters that have been passed around, I think we need to keep that in the forefront, and...
New hospital status.
Yes, please.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, at the October 27th meeting, possibly meet at five o'clock to discuss the September financials, as we have been doing in the past, and any movement on the 205 budgets.
Is your second?
Second.
Need a second on the hospital.
I'll second the hospital.
Anything else, Mr. Mitchell?
No, sir.
Mr. Perk, no, Mr. Perk runs out, Mr. Snyder.
Yard waste again will be a continuation, I hope.
Yeah, it'll be back on there automatically.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, that's the right thing. There was something, but I think that's it for now.
Ms. Zeller?
No, I don't have anything.
Counsel economist, Mr. DeVito.
Well, I'd like to thank Chief Hyatt for all those years of service. The word on the street is, he's finally come to his senses and going to retire, and I wish him all the best, good fishing and hunting, and riding, whatever he plans on doing, and I thank him for all those years of service. I think anybody that pays attention can be proud of the things that Mr. Hyatt has been able to accomplish in Eureka Springs. I can understand we're probably not the easiest city in the world to deal with, but I think he's done an exemplary job, and I thank him for all the good years of service.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCollum?
Nothing there.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ditto to what Ms. Alderman DeVito said about the Chief Earl, and, and another note, I, I always found that he ran an extremely great department, and you could see that in his financials each month, they were phenomenal. That's it.
Ms. Snyder?
Just so Earl doesn't get it all, same thing goes to Reese Williams. We're also having our fire chief retire for, boy, we're losing, losing all of our big boys.
He's going first.
Yeah, he is, he's, he's, yeah, we're teasing him, he's the quitter rather than the retirer, but he says that he's being the smartest one. I would also like to congratulate my husband. After forty-one years at Holiday Island, he has been officially retired as of last Saturday. Anybody need a husband, please holler. He's been on vacation for six weeks. Good Lord.
Is that it?
No. The other thing is, Veterans Parade, we need convertible cars to drive, we need people in the parade, we need restaurants, Mr. James, I'm looking at you, to this year, because of Sue's little heart attack episode, she and I usually do most of the quick and get some people to help us. This year, we're asking all of our local resident, or local restaurants, if they would please donate food for the meet and greet after the parade and the 21-gun salute. Give us a call, my number is on the city site, or Sue's number, if you know it, please give a call, we do need a lot of people helping out. It's been rough trying to do this in two months instead of ten or eleven. That's it.
Ms. Zeller?
No.
Okay. I haven't read the comments, but I do have a list of events. October the 16th through the 19th is the War Eagle Show. October 16th through the 18th is the Fall Book Sale at the Carnegie Library at 5:00 P.M. October 16th through the 18th, Voices from the Silent City at the Cemetery, starting at 5:00 P.M. every night. October the 18th, Oktoberfest Courthouse Parking Lot, 11:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. October the 19th is Eureka Springs Classical Movie at the Auditorium, Gone with the Wind, starts at 7:00 P.M. October the 23rd through the 26th is Minis in the Ozarks, Mini Coopers. Parade is on Friday at 4:00 P.M. October the 24th is Mad Hatter's Ball, 7:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. October 24th through the 25th is Voices, 5:00 and 9:00 P.M. And October the 25th, Annual Fall Craft Show at Pine Mountain Parking Lot, from nine o'clock till, 9:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. October the 25th is the 19th Annual Howl-a-ween, Halloween Party at Turbentine Creek, from 7:00 to 9:00 P.M. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no, we are adjourned.
James? James?
Run with the wind?
Run with the wind.
What is that?